We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on December 15th, 2020, at 3:01 PM. Joining me online today are Mayor Pro Tem Hector Sabido, Councilmember Andrea Bearfield, Councilmember Josh Borderood, Councilmember Kelly Palmer, and Councilmember Jim Holmes. City staff also online today are Bradley Ford, our city manager, Jennifer Ritchie, our city attorney, and Esmeralda Hudson, our city secretary. On March 16th, 2020, the governor suspended various provisions of the Open Meetings Act pursuant to his state of disaster authority. The change was effective until March 16th, 2020, excuse me, the change was effective on March 16th, 2020, until further notice or until the state of disaster declaration expires. In accordance with physical distancing guidelines and while providing as much transparency as possible, this meeting will not be open to the public attending in person. This meeting is being broadcast live at WCCC.TV. The audio is also being recorded. The video and audio recordings will be available to the public. According to the governor and attorney general, statutes that may require face-to-face interaction between members of the public and public officials are suspended, provided however, that the governmental body offers alternative methods of communication with their public officials. This includes public comments on agenda items. In an effort to allow for as much public input as possible, those who wish to speak or submit their written comments on a listed agenda item were asked to register with the city secretary's office by 11:00 AM today. Individuals who registered to speak on an agenda item must limit their comments to three minutes. On items other than the public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. We will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from city manager Bradley Ford. Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon, councilmembers. We did not have any changes for the agenda today, so I'm going to move pretty quickly into the Hulsey report and allow him to give you a series of great updates of what's going on in the community.
All right. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
All right, let's get going. The Waco Transit System and its consultant continue to refine the design for the proposed BRT stations and evaluate station locations. Community members were invited to participate in a live virtual public meeting that took place at 6:00 PM Thursday, December the 10th, to learn about the BRT project and share feedback. The public meeting was offered online as a webinar and via phone rather than in person. During the virtual meeting, community members had the opportunity to interface with a project team to ask questions and provide feedback. Information about the station design, the station locations that are currently being evaluated, and a questionnaire to submit comments is available online in English and Spanish from now until December the 24th, as well as a recording of the virtual meeting at wacoBRTopenhouse.net. On Friday evening, December the 11th, 16 downtown merchants provided their own special brew of cocoa for this year's annual Cocoa Crawl. After pre-purchasing a special 2020 mug, shoppers were able to sample and vote for the best cocoa as they shop the stores in downtown as a part of a December to Remember organized by the downtown Waco. Face coverings and social distancing measures were in place at all locations to make sure it was a fun, safe, and enjoyable time in downtown Waco. The first virtual Waco Wonderland kicked off the holiday celebration of downtown Waco with a number of virtual events, including the tree lighting by the mayor and council, fireworks show, a holiday greeting from Santa and his reindeer, storytimes, holiday light tours, and sounds of the season, holiday music. More than 17,000 viewers watched our WCCC livestream and 12,000 watched the tree lighting on the Parks and Recreation Facebook page and 6,000 for the storytime, in addition to the unknown numbers of people watching our cable channel on their TVs at home. KWTX also posted the live tree lighting and storytime on their Facebook. It was just a great time to usher in the holidays in downtown in midst of a pandemic. On Thursday, December the 10th, the Greater Waco Chamber hosted a virtual state of the city and county where Mayor Meek and Judge Felton made individual presentations, all virtually. The presentations were broadcast live on the Waco City Cable Channel and on our livestream. A replay of the presentations also aired on Sunday afternoon after the city council replays. On Tuesday, December the 8th, the new dirt curators were installed at the Waco Convention Center, adding the beauty of the holidays for all to see. But the biggest hype hit for the year is a decorated dessert fire engine that has been making its rounds throughout neighborhoods, spreading holiday music and fun. This city's Facebook pages have been blown up and loaded with posts with citizens sharing videos of their kids' excitement as a truck came down the street. In spite of extensive Facebook posts due to heavy demand, wanting to know where it is, Waco Transit has loaned the truck one of its GPS bus trackers so people can track the bus throughout the city. And that completes my report.
All right, thanks Larry for that report.
I just want to say, the fire truck passed by my and through my neighborhood last night, and it was just amazing. Our family stepped outside and enjoyed it, and I filmed it on Facebook, and it was just the coolest. And we're getting lots of shout-outs from all around the state and country because, you know, our fire department has gone above and beyond. So kudos to Chief Summers and everybody in Waco Fire Department.
I couldn't have said it better. I've heard so many great things about the holiday fire truck, and not only kids, but adults are excited about it. And so I've seen videos on social media, people putting on and wondering where the fire truck is going to be next. And so I really want to thank, excuse me, the Waco firefighters for just this creative way of bringing holiday cheer in a year that's much needed. And so kudos to the fire department all around.
I was just excited to see, it looks like that Santa Claus has some local affiliations with maybe the Semtex, AGC, and MCC. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right, glad to see, he's my neighbor, because I'm from the North Pole.
Well played, councilmember. We do have two informal reports on the agenda today. Informal report 202875 is a follow-up to a council question at the last meeting regarding persons experiencing homelessness and entities' plans on how to address access during the cold season. I are...
City Manager Ford, thank you so much for putting this. I know I'm the one that requested this informal report at last council meeting. It's good to know that the city has great partners in making sure that we address the homeless situation here in our community. A very special shout-out to Mission Waco and Salvation Army for doing more than is asked of them, especially during this time of COVID, and making sure that not only our homeless community are being kept warm but safe still as well. And I know there are so many other stakeholders that possibly were not included in the report but are doing their part in taking care of our homeless community, especially right now that the weather has definitely changed and it's frigid temperatures at night. And so I really want to thank the city of Waco for already being proactive in making sure that this is set up even before the weather changed. So thank you so much for the report.
Our second, thank you, councilmember. Our second informal report on the agenda today is an update of efforts to adopt the 2018 international codes, our building codes, as well as the 2020 National Electric Code. Staffs using this informal report to kind of provide a heads-up to the council and the public that those will be actions forthcoming on an upcoming council agenda. We do have four public hearings on the agenda today. Three of them are planning-related public hearings that Clint Peters, our Director of Development Services, will be reviewing later in the work session. And the final public hearing is related to our 2019-2020 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, our CAPER, as it's called. And that'll be covered by Renisha Hudnall, our interim Director of Community Services in the business session later on this evening. Resolutions on the agenda today, we have 13, and I'm going to highlight just a couple. The first is Resolution 202887. It's a resolution authorizing the publication of a notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligations for an amount not to exceed $81 million. The projects proposed under this notice of intent have been included as an attachment to the agenda item, and they're focused on improving our city's infrastructure. You'll note in the list of projects, more than $43 million of water and wastewater projects, $29 million for streets, $6 million for solid waste projects, and a little under $1 million for park improvements. Staff anticipates that we'll bring an ordinance forward to the council in February, authorizing the bond sale, and that the bond sale will occur in March of 2021. Currently, staff and our bond council anticipate this bond sale will result in record-low interest rates, considering the current state of the municipal bond market, as well as our city's more-than-stellar AA-plus bond rating. Second resolution I'd like to highlight is Resolution 202888 and 889. They're associated with one another. The two resolutions are just another great example of an industrial recruitment success happening in our business park. Unconditional Love is the name of the company that will be occupying 303,000 square feet located at 2101 Texas Central Parkway. Unconditional Love plans to produce premium diapers and related childcare products from this facility. They have committed to create more than 110 full-time jobs with an average wage of $40,000, and with each job paying more than $15 an hour. In exchange for Unconditional Love investing more than $31 million into that facility here in Waco, we do have two incentives on the council's agenda today. And the first is a business grant. That's effectively a tax abatement that will rebate taxes generated by the company for real property. We'll provide 25% back over five years for real property. And then for personal property, we'll provide back a rebate on a declining scale, starting at 70% in 2022, and then working its way down to 15% by 2028. Staff estimates that the city will retain almost $2.2 million of property taxes between 2022 and 2032, even after accounting for the business grant reimbursements. The second incentive that this project qualifies for is a Waco McLennan County Economic Development Grant, WebMec Grant of $2.5 million, with half of that being paid by the city and the other half being paid by the county. At the risk of sounding like a broken record for the third meeting in a row, I do want to give a special thanks to the Economic Development Project Team, which included Chris Collins from the Greater Waco Chamber, City Attorney Ritchie, as well as Kent George, the city economic development manager.
Hey Bradley, I just wanted to say thank you for highlighting this. We said this at, I think Councilmember Holmes and I said this at the last council meeting, and I'll say it again at this council meeting. This is the type of companies that we love to see in Waco that we are willing to invest in, and this is one. I'm going to use Councilmember Holmes's words that checks up all the boxes for us. You know, $31 million in investment, you know, new personal or real property, 110 full-time jobs, or all of them are paying at least $15 an hour plus health insurance benefits, the average annual wage of no less than $40,000. And of course, having a sales office here at the Waco facility, just it's a perk on top of that. And so I'm very grateful for, as you mentioned, Kent George, Jennifer Ritchie, Chris Collins, and all of our other partners at WebMec as well that are collaborating with this and think this is also a great idea. And so I just want to say that both resolutions have my full support.
Bradley, I'd like to pop up...
And this is a home. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment about a resolution we skipped over, 202886. We've had some conversations about this throughout the council, but knowing that COVID-19 is going to continue to be very much a real reality for us for the next several months, I would like us to consider proposing extending this out from just a one-month emergency declaration at a time to potentially two to three months and being on calls with subject matter experts. It sounds like COVID is going to be something we're going through wrestling with throughout most of 2021. So I think extending this at least through the spring feels in line with the realities that we're going to be seeing locally.
And while we're on that subject of 86, really quick, I'll just add, I agree that it does seem to really sound like it is going to be something that... This order will be effective certainly for the next three months, it sounds like. I know that we've been doing it on a month-by-month basis, and whether we leave it in place for just one month or do extend for another month, I think that it's important for our community to know that it's based on what all the doctors are saying. While we have such great hope and are so excited from the news of the vaccines that are being delivered in Texas as we speak, it does seem like this is going to be something that's going to be... This declaration will be in place for a while. And so while that is the case, maybe we can pull it from the consent agenda and talk through in the business session, whether to do one month or three months. But regardless of what we do, I... Regardless of what we do practically in this moment, I do forecast that this will come before us again next month if we just do one month.
Mayor and council, if I may, this is on the agenda to only take us through January 31st, 2021. Certainly, so we're not posted to take it further than January 31st, 2021 on this agenda. Certainly, if that's council's will, we could put it on an agenda in early December for y'all to consider a longer time period. But that would not be possible on this agenda.
Thank you, thank you, Jennifer, I appreciate that. And again, I think that what's important for our citizens to hear is that although we have great news of the vaccines coming out, I think that this is going to be something that's going to be with us for a while. And from a practical perspective, we'll probably need this declaration in place, certainly for more than just one more month.
This is Holmes, I'll chime in on that. I think it's been our practice, what, since we... I think we led the way for the, maybe the state, of putting something like this in place on a, in a six-week sort of increment. And every month since last, I don't know, Jennifer's been last April or May, I think we've been ahead, always stayed ahead by six months or six weeks on doing the extension. Just so, I think, Councilmember Palmer, just for that. We've kind of been trying to stay ahead of it six weeks, but certainly, I can, I agree with you that it'll probably go beyond January. Was there any other discussion on that? I wanted to echo some of Hector's comments on the unconditional love. See, I don't think we all knew that you could put a price on unconditional love of $31 million.
Were you waiting to make that joke? Were you waiting to make that joke?
$31 million will get you there. Now, again, I'm just so pleased with the news that's been coming out of our Economic Development Group in the last few months. And this is just another big project, $31 million to 110 jobs, $40,000 average wage, that health insurance benefit. We haven't ever made a, we don't normally make a big deal out of that, but that is a real thing and it's very valuable. And it adds value to your home income. And the grant, I think, is very reasonable for that kind of, this kind of project, five-year kind of payout on the WebMec Grant. I think this is all in, very much in line with what we're trying to do on bringing good businesses to Waco. I guess it has a celebrity element to it, too. Kristen Bell and Dax Shepard, so, you know. I hope they're there for the grand opening. We'll get the whole thing. And this is more of a, this is less of warehousing, is they're actually, if I'm right, they're actually making the diapers and stuff here. Is that right, or is this a, is this a warehousing sort of distribution? I think there's actually manufacturing, manufacturing element here, which makes it even kind of better, in my opinion.
That's correct.
Anyway, very supportive of this. And I appreciate Jennifer, your job on this, and Kent, and Chris, obviously, over at the Greater Waco as well. That's all.
All right, I'll just be the last one to chime in on this and just say, echo what's been said on this item. I do think that this is an example of our growing economy. This is consistent with our council priorities to raise our median income, and it's jobs like this that are critical for that goal to be achieved. I'm thankful for the team that put this together, that's already been acknowledged. But this is going to be, these type of projects are the forward-moving steps that we need to see our economy continue to grow as we want it to. And it's just one step closer to having greater opportunity for Wacoans to find financial security. So thanks to those who worked on this deal. Comments, Mayor. Our last resolution that I'd like to highlight is 202897. It's a resolution on the agenda awarding the Webster Avenue Streetscape Project to TTG Utilities for just under $2.27 million. The low bid from TTG was notably 20% lower than the engineer's probable cost, which is a very positive thing for the city. The project includes a mill and overlay on Webster from Sixth Street to Eighth Street, as well as streetscape improvements from Sixth Street to 11th Street, which will add ADA improvements at intersections, wider sidewalks, continuous safety lighting, additional parking and street trees. And as the council's well aware, and the public is by now as well, this area downtown has seen significant pedestrian traffic increases. And today's bid award will certainly aid in having a safer and more pleasant experience in that area. The project was funded by multiple funding sources, with more than half coming from our tax increment financing district, number one, and the remainder of funding provided from the city's street, storm, and utility bond funds. The project is fully designed and anticipated to be completed in summer of 2021.
Hey Bradley, thank you so much for highlighting this. I did want to point that, incorrect me if I'm wrong, TTNG is an NWBE as well, correct? So that's another perk that we have, that this company that's going with the bid is a minority or with women, business, entrepreneur-owned. And I think you mentioned this, but I think you said that the cost was 20% less than anticipated. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's around a $600,000 savings. So nothing to sneeze at, for sure. And so I just wanted to say kudos to staff for being adamant with this and sticking with this and looking at the best poss, being financially responsible while still getting a quality product done. So thank you for that.
To echo Mayor Pro Tem, I love to see something like this, both because we are saving money and being fiscally conservative and stewarding our resources well, while supporting a woman-owned business. We love to see it. These are the kinds of things I would love to continue to push forward. So great job to city staff for getting this done, and excited to see this development in District 2.
Thanks for those comments, councilmember. We do have one ordinance, one ordinance on the agenda today, and it's a second reading. And if there's no further questions, Mayor, that concludes my report. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, the consent agenda will include resolutions 22886 through resolutions 22898. I will now ask the city manager to introduce the first work session. Thanks, Mayor. We have Clint Peters joining us, our Director of Development Services, and he'll be working us through work session 877, which is a discussion of our planning public hearing agenda items. Clint?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We do have three public hearings for planning items. The first one is dealing with our subdivision plats. We have two subdivision plats this month, the first one being the Pumraye Platte of the Southern Heights Edition. This is in our ETJ, located south of the city limits of Waco, near the city of Lorena. This is a small residential subdivision of 25 acres. They are proposing 19 single-family lots, averaging in size of about 1.2 acres each. This is on Spring Valley Water, and you can see the layout here. They will be building some temporary cul-de-sacs at the end of the street for potential future connection into adjacent properties as those develop. And then the second plat is the Pumraye Platte of the Bodie Road Edition. This is another one in our ETJ. This is north of town. And you can see TSTC Airport down south on the map. This is north towards Ross in Leroy. And this is a little bit larger subdivision, 130 acres in size, 42 lots. These are large lots ranging in size from about an acre and a half to three acres. And Plan Commission recommended approval of both of these plats. Our next public hearing, 883, is a public hearing to consider an abandonment of a 20-foot alley located between Rusk Avenue and Tyler Street, and then Sherman Street and Preston Street in East Waco. This alley is one block off of Elm Avenue to the north. It is in a residential block. The applicants own some, two vacant lots there, and they would like to build new homes on there and would like to abandon the alley to incorporate that space into the property for development. We did get quite a bit of feedback on this request, and so we put together a map that kind of shows what's going on, a little bit closer look at it, and then the feedback that we got from the surrounding property owners. So the two black stars are the subject properties, the applicant properties, the first one being at 609 Rusk and then 217 Sherman Street. And you can see here, they're both vacant lots. The yellow stars are property owners that we got feedback supporting the abandonment. And you can see, there's two in that block that are adjacent, immediately adjacent to it when we impacted. One on the corner of Preston and Tyler, which is a single-family home, and then another one on Sherman, which is a small commercial building. And then you can see there's other yellow stars on the map that aren't immediately adjacent to it, but still in support of it. These, all these property owners did sign a petition that the owner, or the applicant circulated throughout the neighborhood. You can see, there's also two red stars that submitted opposition to the request, one being directly adjacent to and impacted by the abandonment, and then the other off the corner of Rusk and Sherman. The property owner that's adjacent to that did not want the alley abandoned for a couple of reasons, mainly for keeping access to their property. The house that they own there does not have a driveway at Preston. It is accessed near the alley, so they would like to keep that access. And then they also had some concerns about increased property taxes with additional property ownership as these abandonments would go, the property would go back to the owner. And then the last two stars are blue stars. These are actually city trustees lots, tax foreclosure lots, that would be impacted by the abandonment. The way the abandonment works, when the alley right-of-way is abandoned, the property is split between the two sides. So the owners on one side will get 10-footed alley, and the owners on the other side will get 10-footed alley adjacent to their properties. We did also receive support from the Northeast Riverside Neighborhood Association in favor of this alley abandonment. Here's pictures, so this is looking from Sherman back towards Rusk. These are the subject properties, vacant lots that they would like to build. And on the right side of your screen, you can see where the alley right-of-way is. There, it's currently not built, it's a, it's grass area. It does have a city sewer line on it, and you can see it also has the TXU power lines that run through it. And this is just looking more up and down the alley. You can see the commercial building on the other side of it. And then this is looking from the opposite side of the alley. The greenhouse on the right is the property that is opposed to it. You can see, they do have a little gate here. It's hard to tell, but it does come off the alley to get into that gate. And then you can see that the other house on the left that's in favor of it, that has shins off that area and has access to the street. The Plan Commission, the request was for the whole alley abandonment between Preston and Sherman. And because of the opposition from the corner property, the Plan Commission just recommended to abandon the portions of the alley directly behind where the applicants... the Plan Commission just recommended to abandon the portions of the alley directly behind where the applicant's own. So the area in gray is recommended to stay open alleyway adjacent to the property that is opposed to it. And that did satisfy both the applicant and the person, the property owner that was opposed to it. So this is the recommendation of the Plan Commission. There was a couple of conditions on that, one being that we retain a 20-foot easement for the utilities. And the other is the applicant must provide survey exhibits and film notes for all the quitclaim deeds and easements associated with the abandonment. And then our final.
Clint, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, Hector, go go ahead, and then I'll finish.
Well, I was just, I was wondering in the in the reading material that we got, I believe it said that Plan Commission voted to approve it, but staff did not recommend approval. And may I ask why that was?
Yeah, so it's it's staff's position is that it's not good policy to to leave dead-end alleys. And so typically, we like to to abandon the whole alleyway or have some sort of ingress egress or ability to turn around or connect back to the street. And so that's that's why the staff's recommendation was for disapproval. We did have an alternate recommendation of approval that would abandon the whole alley but leave an ingress egress easement next to 216 Preston Street. But but that owner did not want that. He'd rather have the alley adjacent to it. And so that was the compromise that the Plan Commission voted on at their hearing.
And you said that the applicant, the neighbor and Plan Commission and the staff were okay with that?
I think in this situation, you know, although, you know, it's not a good practice overall, but in this situation, staff was comfortable with the compromise with all the parties.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I was going to mention the the staff disapproval. My concern is, is that if we start breaking up alleys, it sets a precedent. And I'm not sure that that because there are lots of alleys in Waco. And we made some decisions about policy changes, you know, several councils back. But, you know, that they, you know, not be used for trash and all that, why they were created. But the fact that they're there, I think that I'm I'm not sure that there's full understanding. And I could just be speaking for me of what it means if you create dead ends and alleys. I think that is, I just don't think that it's something that that we want to begin to okay. I have concerns about this, and I appreciate the fact that everyone that is directly connected to this weighed in on that. I mean, I think that is incredibly important that we hear from our community and 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 really weigh and study what it is that they have to say about their neighborhoods and their their homes and their properties. My hesitation comes from, you know, this one, one okay, then it's again and again. And so then you've got a city full of of dead-ended alleys that are at some point going to upset somebody. And or neighborhoods and, you know, and get disjointed, or we won't have the access we need. I just think it's it's a slippery slope.
Hi Clint, Kelly Ballmer here. I just want to say I really appreciate this visual you created. I think this is really accessible. It's really clear, both with the picture of the resident's home, who isn't in favor of this, and the stars. I just would love to see more documents like this created by the city. It makes it feel really accessible for folks to understand what's going on. So thanks for the great work there.
Thank you.
That is Josh Ward Rude. Yeah, I second all of those comments, and the graphic is very helpful to understand. And my understanding and full disclosure to the mayor and council is that I participated in the public hearing, the first part of the public hearing in October on the Plan Commission, and I'm told by a city attorney that I do not have a conflict in voting on this. But my understanding is that this was a compromise by the Plan Commission to accommodate one resident affected there. The one at Russ, I guess one on Preston, but that residence's concerns are primarily the tax appraisal consequences and perhaps the cost of fencing as well in acquiring more land for the property. Is that correct?
Those were some of the concerns, but he also mentioned losing access to to his property from the alleyway.
Will he will he not have access to his property if the if the alleyway is abandoned?
So so just for clarity, the what's on the agenda is the whole alley. So if if council chooses, you could rec- you could approve abandoning the whole alley. The solution that staff came up with to keep him access was to actually keep an ingress egress easement on the portion of the alley adjacent to that 216 Preston. So, you know, it would be abandoned, it would go to both the private properties on both sides. But keeping that easement would allow allow that property owner to keep, you know, access to enter to to their property from the abandoned alley right of way. Or with the Plan Commission's recommendation, it just keeps it as an alley right of way to that point. And then it, you know, obviously, it's still a public right of way that can be accessed by anybody.
Thank you.
This is Holmes. This being, I remember abandoning him in the last few years on mostly commercial properties that seemed that makes sense because it kind of consolidated into one big track. On this residential, do then we give the the extra 10 feet? The 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 resident then can just move, literally move his fence back 10 feet then, and it's his, right?
Correct.
There's still, then there's still an easement through there for, the city retains an easement through there. Is that that's right?
Correct. It'll be a utility easement because there is both a city utility sewer line and then also electrical line back there. So it'd be a general utility easement. But it could be fenced in, you know, to add to yard. It couldn't be built on it, you know, it couldn't be a structure, but it could be fenced in. And and you can see here, if it's abandoned, then 10 feet would go to the properties in the north and then the 10, because it's a 20-foot wide alley, and then 10 feet properties to the south.
So I'm a little puzzled by the guy because he would still get 10 foot of his, he just wouldn't get the full 20-foot access. He'd only have 10 foot of access, right?
Correct.
If he did. I kind of, I mean, I agree with what Councilmember Bearfield is saying that I hate to go through and say, yeah, this one gets half, and then this one we have to split up 14 ways and whatever. I like the all or none kind of concept. Where this one's on the end, maybe it's not quite as egregious, but I don't know, just somehow communicating to the to the folks. I agree that not everything fits everybody, but in this one, it seems like it would still fit. I'll say that's the cleanest alley I've seen, you know, in the city. That was that was, you can see from end to end. That was fantastic. I just hope that as they push these back, that people still take care of them. But I can see both sides of this thing, where I hate to hate for staff to have to start picking winners and losers, and this one goes all the way, this one doesn't. That's all.
Clint, for this one, you said that it, in the event that there would be an abandonment of the entire alley, y'all were going to do an easement for the property owner so that he would have full access to the full 20 feet. Is that right?
That's correct. That was that was our
Solution.
Solution from the staff standpoint.
Okay. Is there, this, I don't know if anyone would be interested in this, but is there a scenario where lot looks, I don't know, is that the the property owner on the opposite side of the alley would take the full 20 feet? And and the other guy would have the easement? Is that available as a compromise? Is that a possible?
That is possible. You know, that would have to be an agreement between the two
Okay.
Property owners. We do, we're required to do quitclaim deeds for how is dedicated, you know, 10 feet on either side. But if the property owners got together, they could work out some deal where, you know, one side deeded their portion to the other side if they wanted to do so.
And the opponent's opposition was related to access and property taxes, is that correct?
Property taxes, and as Councilmember Ward Reed said, a concern about the cost of having to move a fence, which is not not a requirement. They can leave the fence where they are. They're just would have, you know, additional land outside the fence.
Do we, are there, this might be asking too much, but are there any comps for what that extra, that that extra footage would be for what the price per square foot is on his appraised value right now?
I don't have that information, and, you know, either way, it's going to be covered with an easement. So I don't think it's going to be a huge amount, but we don't, we don't have an estimate for that.
Just just trying to get the full picture. That sounds great. Thank you, guys.
And then at our last public hearing, 884, is for a short-term rental type two. This is from Dr. Susan Wiseman at the property located at 3825 North 30th Street up in our Cedar Ridge neighborhood. This short-term rental type two is a either a single-family or duplex residential property where short-term lodging is provided to one group at a time per unit. In this case, it's a single-family home. And that the the owner does not reside or is present when the property is being rented. And that's what makes it a short-term rental type two. This property is a single-family home, like I said, in the Cedar Ridge Neighborhood Association. It's on 30th Street, just north of Park Lake Drive, which is here. You can see Lakeshore up to the north. It's single-family zoning, and then this map shows there is another approved short-term rental on Lakeshore Drive, but it is outside the 500-foot buffer, which is a requirement of our license ordinance that you can't have any additional short-term rentals within 500 feet of another one. This is a short-term rental too, but the owner actually lives next door to this unit and will be to this to this home and will be operating it and managing it from their home next door. They do have a two-car garage and a circular drive. It's a three-bedroom home. And here's a picture of the house, and their 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 home where they live is on the other side of this. And we did get one card in opposition, but Plan Commission did recommend approval of this one by a vote of 10 to 1. And that's all we have for public hearings.
All right. Thanks, Clint, for that presentation. Mayor and Council, our our next presentation on work session is work session 2020-878, which is a discussion of the latest information on the coronavirus disease 2019 COVID-19, including trends and local preparedness activities. I'm going to invite Deputy City Manager Deidra Emerson to introduce this topic, as well as our two presenters today that have really been on the on the leading edge of our COVID-19 response. Deidra?
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This afternoon, we'd like to take some time and provide you information on the impact that the coronavirus has had on our community. But before I turn it over to Stephanie Shaw, I'm sorry, Bedihi Shaw, our Senior Epidemiologist, and Stephanie Alvi, our Preparedness Coordinator, along with Dr. Werner, I just want to take a minute just to thank them for the work and the leadership that they have demonstrated in this process. The work continues, and they know that, and they, but they've continued to demonstrate strong leadership and commitment to the city of Waco, McLennan County. Bedihi?
Sorry about that. Hi, Deidra. Thank you so much for the introduction, and hello, everyone. I will start the presentation. Are you seeing the main page? Okay, can you see, can everybody see this?
Yes, it's the page with your slides next to it, the notes.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, everyone. I'm sorry, I'm trying to share the screen that has the presentation on it. Okay. So we'll be talking about what we have done, like background on what we have done since December 2019, when we started manage or working with the virus. Then I will talk about the current case count. I'll do a little bit of, I'll give a little bit of information on some data analysis that we've done on cases we've seen so far on COVID-19. And then Stephanie Alvi, our Preparedness Coordinator, will go through our search capacity and vaccine planning. So to start with the background, the first time we heard about the novel coronavirus at that time in December 2019, we didn't have the name COVID-19 yet, was in December. We started following it. CDC was following the counts. That was when we had still just seen cases in China. Then in January, on January 17th is when we started attending CDC briefings. And then McLennan County saw its first suspect novel coronavirus case on January 22nd. Once we received a report of the person who had traveled to China and had symptoms, we coordinated with the state and CDC to test the individual. Fortunately, the individual came back negative. But following that, we've had multiple situations where we have coordinated testing with the CDC at that time. And then when the state had capacity to test with the state, to test several individuals and residents in the county who were suspected of the virus. And then on March 4th is when we started a community leaders coalition as the health district. And since then, we have done several things in response to the outbreak. We launched a website, covidwaco.com, that provides information, timely and efficient information to the community. We have responded to numerous outbreaks in schools, in nursing homes, daycares, local businesses. We conduct outbreak investigations and do contact tracing, and then connect those individuals to resources in the community. We've hosted weekly calls with our healthcare partners and continue to have conversations with our healthcare partners on their capacity. We provide weekly updates to our community. And with the EOC, that is the Emergency Operations Center, we have activated a call center to respond to queries by our citizens. We assisted them, we assisted our community, our healthcare workers to get PPE when there was PPE shortage. And EOC continues to work when continues to work coordinating testing sites for the community with the state as well as our federal partners. The list of our achievements or work is going to go on, so I'm going to go on to the next slide. For our current case count, as of today, we have 139 new cases reported. That brings our total cases to date to 16,570. 831 are active and estimated active, and 15,550 are estimated recovered. Currently, 116 individuals are in the hospital with COVID-19 diagnosis. This is the highest number of hospitalizations we've seen in a single day. Out of those 116, 81 are McLennan County residents. And our fatalities to date are 239. We reported three new additional deaths today. Moving on to data analysis, I'll walk you through some of the time periods that we have seen since the beginning of the outbreak. Now, the chart gives you the data on the number of cases that were reported to us by their dates of collection. So the day the individual went to the test, testing site or their provider to get tested. Those are the blue lines or the graphs or the bars. And then the red line is the seven-day running average for those cases reported. So let's start with our first, on 16th of March, the city of Waco and McLennan County issued a disaster declaration. And then on 17th was when we received the first case of COVID-19 in McLennan County. Following that, on 17th April, Texas started its first reopening phases when the businesses were allowed to be at 25% capacity. when the businesses were allowed to be at twenty-five percent capacity. That was followed by eighteenth of May with fifty percent capacity of reopening. This was then we had our first long weekend of the outbreak, the Memorial Day weekend on twenty-fifth of May. Now, in the following graphs, you will see this gray bar. The reason I have the gray bar there is we will not see the effect of the event in this time period. Usually what we have seen with the public or when was that you want to see if there was a mask mandate, you want to see the effect immediately. Or if Memorial Day, you would expect to see the effect immediately of Memorial Day, which is not what happens in real life. If an individual, let's say, for example, was exposed on Memorial Day, the individual on an average would start symptoms after five days of exposure. After a couple of days would go and get tested. The results will take a few more days and then it will take several more days for us to get the results and conduct the investigation. So by the time you see an effect of an event, it is surely more than ten to fifteen days after the event that you'll see the effect. And that's why I have the grays on, so that you don't look at that time period. Next, we had Texas issued additional reopening on sixth of June. And if you can see, we're starting, starting to see an increase in cases early or in the middle of Jan-, of June, which could be the effect of Memorial Day as well as additional reopening. Our city leadership issued a mask mandate in the city of Waco on twenty-eighth of June. And we definitely saw a decrease in our number of cases as a result of that mask mandate. If you look at, notice the portion after the gray zone. Then we had our second long weekend, July fourth. We still continue to see a decrease in cases all thanks to the max mask mandate and mitigation protocols in place in the community. Then we had the schools and universities reopened during the fall, which was around eighteenth of August. And if you see, we were going down in our number of cases and then we went up after the opening of educational institutions. Then we had our Labor Day weekend. That was another long weekend. We did not see a big change in the number of cases there. Then Texas issued additional reopenings where businesses were allowed to open at seventy-five percent capacity. If you notice the numbers, now you can see an increase in the number of cases following that. And then we had Halloween weekend, after which we've seen a huge spike in the number of cases. The spike has been higher than the spike that we saw in June. And then follow, following that, we have Thanksgiving weekend. I want to point out that we have that dip in that graph because during those four days, not many people went to healthcare facilities to get tested. And that is why the number of cases reported during that time went down a lot. A number of individuals who got tested went down a lot. Following the Thanksgiving weekend, we have seen a kind of a plateau, but it is in this week and the following week where we will see the real effect of the Thanksgiving weekend. Let's look at some other data for the same time periods. Now, this graph shows the number of tests conducted. The blue lines are the number of tests that were conducted on that day and the red line is the seven-day running average. And from the beginning until now, we have increased our capacity to, to do testing a lot. But after Thanksgiving, we have seen a slight decline in the number of tests conducted. With the number of tests conducted, we are always tending behind because of the way the data is received. So this number may change and the gray zone is the section where the numbers will change. Looking at the positivity rate, this line is the seven-day running average of our positivity rate. We started really high. We went higher in June. We went down and now we are going up again. So our positivity rate is on the rise. And same as test counts, the positivity rate fluctuates for at least ten days because of the way reports are received. This graph shows the number of hospitalizations. This is something that is on the rise and we haven't seen a decline in our number of hospitalizations. And one more thing I'd like to point out is the way we have seen the cases or the pattern in this outbreak has been, we will see a rise in the number of cases. That is, after several weeks, maybe three or four weeks, we will see a rise in the number of hospitalizations. And it's after that we'll see a rise in our fatalities. So we're in the stage right now where we definitely have high number of hospitalizations, which is affecting our hospital capacity. And we are seeing an increase in the fatalities. This graph shows the number of fatalities that were reported by each month. The highest we have seen has been in the month of November, which was forty-five. And we are on fifteenth December and have already reached thirty-four. If we continue with the rate that we are at right now, we may reach definitely more than forty-five and even reach fifty by the end of December. So to summarize the information that I provided, our number of cases have plateaued and we may see a spike from the Thanksgiving cases. The number of tests have plateaued. Our positivity rate is increasing. Hospitalizations are increasing and our fatalities are increasing. Now let's move on to the demographics, our trends and demographics of the cases that are reported to us. Let's start with race and ethnicity. This graph, the four bar gra-, bars on this graph are, the first one is population census. So twenty-five, seven percent of McLennan County population is Hispanic and of any race. Thirty percent of all our cases are Hispanic. Twenty-seven percent are hospitalized and twenty-six percent are fatalities. In the ideal world, we would want all of our cases to be twenty-seven percent Hispanic, similar to hospitalizations and fatalities, but that's not what we are seeing. With white, non-Hispanic, fifty-six percent of McLennan County population is white, non-Hispanic. But only thirty-six percent of cases are white, non-Hispanic. Forty-five percent of hospitalizations and fifty-seven percent of fatalities. This is something that we would have expected in an ideal situation for all our races and ethnicities. With black, non-Hispanic, fourteen percent of our county population is black, non-Hispanic. Ten percent of cases, but seventeen percent of hospitalizations and fifteen percent of fatalities are black, non-Hispanic. So we definitely see, this graph is to summarize the cases in relation to the community, to the population census. So we can see that we have seen a high number of cases in Hispanic population. And with the black population, even though the cases are low, there is high hospitalizations and fatalities. Similarly, we can look at the age ranges. If we look at the less than eighteen years of age, twenty-five percent of our population is less than eighteen. Only twelve percent of cases are less than eighteen. We have no fatalities and one percent of hospitalizations. With the middle-aged group, sixteen to six, uh, sorry, nineteen to sixty-four, sixty percent of our population is in this age group, but seventy-seven percent of our cases come from this age group. Fifty percent of hospitalizations and nineteen percent fatalities. And then if we look at the sixty-five plus, only fifteen percent of our population is sixty-five plus. Just eleven percent of our cases are sixty-five plus, but forty-nine percent are hospitalized. And eighty-one percent of our fatalities are in this age group. And this is again summarizing the information that I just provided. We have high number of cases in the middle-aged group, but it is affecting our older population who is considered to be more at risk to this virus. Now, the following few graphs are to compare how we are doing in comparison to the state and the US. This graph shows the average number of daily cases in the last seven days per hundred thousand. McLennan County is doing fairly well when you compare it to the state of Texas and US, which seems good. But when we look at the hospitalization rate, we are way higher than the state of Texas right now. I couldn't get the data for US, right? It was unavailable on the website, so I don't have that. But as you can see, we are really high in our per hundred thousand hospitalizations. So same, having said all of this, there are measures that we can put in place to help the community better. The city, CDC put out a report where they recommended ten approaches or it's a ten-point approach to mitigate or slow the spread in the community. Wearing masks, now, none of this is something that is new. We have been preaching all of these measures since the past nine months to the community. Wearing a mask, social distancing, avoiding gatherings, identifying and isolating cases, which we're doing, quarantining cold-flows contacts. We want to protect our healthcare workers and our high-risk population. Recommend postponing travel. Wash hands and vaccinate widely. Just vaccinating is not going to help the community. It is a combined approach which will help us mitigate the spread and help with the economic recovery. I'm going to hand it over to Stef now to talk more about our vaccine planning and search capacity.
Hey, thank you. Need some feedback. I don't know if that's just me. Okay, so for everyone that doesn't know me, my name is Stephanie Alvey. I am the Preparedness Coordinator here at the Waco McLennan County Public Health District. And I have been representing the health district in the Emergency Operations Center since March. And the health district does serve as the lead health and medical agency in the Emergency Operations Center. And so one of our primary focuses has been monitoring how the trends in cases and ultimately hospitalizations and deaths that Bediha just talked about are impacting the capacities in our hospitals and mortuary services. Can I get the next slide? Let it, Betty? And so we began discussing what the options might be for if the hospitals exceeded their capacity back in the spring before we really even had our first spike in cases. And the concept of an alternate care site was what we were originally focused on. And alternate care sites, though, are not really a new concept. We've been working with our hospitals and partners at the Regional Advisory Council and through our healthcare coalition for years to develop plans and begin compiling cash or supplies and equipment that might be needed if we had to open a site like this. And so, of course, many of our initial plans for alternate care sites were in response to like mass casualty type events like tornadoes and things like that. But over these last few months, we started looking at what an alternate care site would look like in response to this pandemic. And one of the main things that we have learned over the course of this pandemic is that there really is no one single trigger that would activate or that would cause us to activate an alternate care site. There's so many factors that are impacting the capacities of our hospitals, from staffing to equipment to the actual bed space, as well as staff fatigue and illness. And so what we focused more on more recently is establishing that open line of communication with our hospital leadership and the leadership of the city and the county to discuss what the situation at the hospitals is really looking like. As that subjective target moves, we're working with the facilities to understand what the challenges are and how we can best address those challenges to A, keep more people in healthcare facilities where they're going to receive the best care and B, to have as much advance notice as possible to understand when we might actually have to consider opening an alternate care site. Because what we're seeing right now is that patients that need a higher level of care in some of our smaller hospitals, outs-, really outside of the county, are having trouble finding space in the hospitals that can provide that care, that higher level of care. And so the normal transfer patterns that the hospitals are used to are really being impacted and disrupted. And so our regional advisory council partners are working really hard to help with those placements, both within our trauma service area region, but also across the state when that's necessary. And we're just in a situation where we're really monitoring it very closely. Like Bediha mentioned, our hospitalization rates are the highest that they've ever been. And so we are in constant communication with those facilities and working with all the necessary partners to work through the challenges to help ensure that our residents will have access to the medical care when they need it. And then in terms of our mortuary services, we're really taking a really similar approach. The key to monitoring the capacity of the mortuary service sector is the pre-established working relationships that we have with those partners. And it may surprise you to learn that we actually have been planning for fatality management for many years. We established a work group back in two thousand fourteen to develop our fatality management plan. And those are the partners that we've really been engaging with during this response. So we were able to work with them to establish protocols for post-mortem testing locally that didn't require our JPs to actually send bodies for autopsy to get those COVID results. And we've also learned how the funeral homes and mortuary services really operate so that we could best, make the best decisions about how to support those operations and their capacities. And that's why we knew that providing a mortuary trailer to a particular location was the most appropriate decision. The funeral homes and mortuary services are all private businesses. And although they might have capacity collectively across the, across the different funeral homes and mortuary services, the truth is that if one of them becomes overwhelmed, then the whole system gets taxed. And so making the decision to preemptively bring in the additional mortuary capacity ended up being a good one, unfortunately, because we did have to use it. We are continuing to meet with our funeral directors and mortuary service providers to monitor the capacity in the county. And that will put us in a good position to make sure that if we need to make any additional requests, that we can do that as needed. Uh, next slide, Betty? And so switching gears a little bit, another primary focus of the health department is, in the last few weeks especially, has been planning for the COVID nineteen vaccine, obviously. So I'm going to give a real high-level update on some of the things that we know about the vaccine and how we've been planning for the availability of the vaccine once it gets to our community. So I'll touch on what the timelines are that we're looking at and our planning assumptions. Give a little bit of an overview of the vaccine candidates that we know are coming and then touch a little bit on the critical populations that we're planning for and give you an update on some of the local planning efforts that we've got going on. Okay, next slide, Betty. Thank you. And so in order to most effectively plan for the rollout of the vaccine, we've been working under a timeline that was established by both the federal partners, CDC, Operation Warp Speed, and our state partners at Department of State Health Services. Of course, this is a very fluid situation, so these dates are definitely subject to change. But as you can see, we've been in what we call phase zero up until this last weekend. The first emergency use authorization for the vaccine was approved on Friday and the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices released its formal recommendations on Saturday. And that formalized the recommendations for the use of the vaccine and establishing the first primary groups to receive the vaccine as healthcare workers and residents of long-term care facilities. And so as of this week, we're actually entering phase one A. We expect this to be, we expect to be in this phase until January when we expect to get a little more guidance from the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices and DSHS about who will be included in that group, one, phase one B group. In all of phase one, we definitely expect the vaccine supply to be somewhat limited. But as we move into early spring and summer of next year, the vaccine supply is expected to increase and we'll be able to offer the vaccine to those with pre-existing medical conditions that make them more susceptible to severe disease. And by late summer and the end of next year, we expect the supply to be sufficient enough to be able to vaccinate any members of the general public that want to be vaccinated. Again, this is a very tentative timeline and the specifics of who exactly will be included in each of these phases will be released by ASAP in Department of State Health Services as we move into those phases. So next slide. And so just to give you an idea of what the vaccine landscape really is looking like, there are several vaccines that have been in clinical trials for the last few months. There are multiple manufacturers as well as multiple platforms, types of vaccines in the pipeline. And the first two, if you'll click it once, are the ones that are going to be available to healthcare workers starting this week and through the end of the year and early next year. They're both similar in that they use the same platform, the mRNA platform, and they both require two doses to provide the best protection. The guidelines released this week say that the Pfizer vaccine is suitable for people sixteen years of age and older, while the initial Moderna vaccine trials only included individuals eighteen years of age and older. They both require a three-to-four-week wait time between the two doses of vaccine and they both have some cold storage requirements. The Pfizer vaccine is the one that requires those ultra-low cold, ultra-cold temperatures of negative seventy degrees. Um, the Fa- the Pfizer vaccine is the one that requires those ultra-low cold, uh, ultra-cold temperatures of negative seventy degrees. And as previously mentioned, the Pfizer vaccine has received its emergency use authorization last week. And the Moderna vaccine is being reviewed this week. So, we'll be getting, um, a lot more details about the Moderna vaccine, um, in the coming days. Um, and the rest of the vaccines on this list are still in phase three trials. Um, we've seen some, um, updated information from the AstraZeneca trials. Um, and we expect to see, uh, results or updates from all of these other vaccines in the next few weeks or months. Next slide, Vettahie. Um, and so, as previously mentioned, the, um, availability of the vaccine is gonna be released in phases. And to start, we're looking at those healthcare workers and long-term care, um, facility residents as part of phase one A. Um, individuals that fall into these other groups that are listed here are, have, they have been identified as priorities, um, while the vaccine supply is still limited. But we haven't received any specific guidance or different definitions for who falls exactly into these categories just yet. Um, with the healthcare workers, we have received a very specific list of the types of, um, providers that fit that definition. And the category has even been broken into two tiers. Um, and so obviously, those working most directly with the sickest COVID patients, the hospital personnel, um, were the top priority, which is why they've been seeing, um, the initial allocations going to hospitals. Um, but we also have included in phase one our EMS providers, our funeral directors, um, healthcare staff that work in, um, outpatient settings. And so, DSHS is actually the agency, um, that is responsible for making the state-level allocations to vaccine providers, um, at, at our local level. And so, those vaccine providers, which are places like your doctor's offices and even the pharmacies, or even places like, um, our jails or other non-traditional settings or long-term care facilities, um, they can all enroll as providers. Um, and so, um, those vaccine providers have to enroll, um, specifically for the COVID nineteen vaccine program. And when they enroll, they sign an agreement with the CDC that says they will follow the guidelines set forth by, um, ASAP and CDC for these priority groups. So at the local level, we really have no say, um, in who falls into these priority groups as we move in through these phases. But, we, uh, will be working with the providers that have enrolled to implement the guidelines, um, provide technical assistance and help connect the people that fall into those, um, as identified priority groups with the vaccine providers that have been allocated and received vaccine, um, in our community. And next slide. And so, for what we've been, um, doing locally, um, to plan for the rollout on the vaccine, I'll just, um, touch on a few broad strategies that we've developed. Um, to start, I will say that we have been planning for what we call medical countermeasures, or, and this includes vaccines, um, the distribution of those for many, many years, actually, starting in two thousand two. Um, one of the fi- first priorities of my program was planning for mass distribution of the smallpox vaccine, um, back when we were worried about, um, the threat of bioterrorism. And so, we have plans in place to address the large-scale vaccination. And we have practiced those plans, um, through large flu vaccine clinics and drive-through clinics over the years. But of course, this vaccine and this pandemic, um, creates some special challenges that we are working to address. And so, one of the first, um, strategies that we, um, established was the forming of a COVID nineteen vaccine planning coalition. Um, with all the information that is evolving and, um, almost daily, it was really important to get, um, all the stakeholders that have a role to play in either receiving and administering the vaccine or ensuring that our community has access to the vaccine. We wanted to get them all, um, together to share information and expectations amongst each other. Um, so we started meeting with the group a couple of weeks ago, and we've had a really good turnout, um, with really good representation from, um, all of the different community partners that provide a broad perspective for the planning, um, of this rollout. And second, we, um, the second strategy is to promote awareness and provide education on the efficacy and the safety of the vaccine. Because what we do know is that we are gonna be combating so much misinformation about this vaccine. And education is going to be key for our community to understand, um, what the safety elements of this vaccine are and, and how, uh, effective it i- it really is. Um, because we do expect a lot of hesitancy in the community. And so, we are gonna be working to understand what is causing that hesitancy and addressing those concerns through a variety of different channels. Um, and third strategy is to identify and address the logistical needs of the vaccine distribution. Um, as I have mentioned, we did, we have planned for this, but we know there's some list logistical challenges with these vaccines, especially with the ultra-cold, um, temperature requirements. Um, and just to help y'all understand, we actually aren't dis- distributing the vaccine to the providers locally. It's not something that the health district or the local jurisdiction, jurisdiction gets the vaccine and then distributes it out. It's actually going through, um, the pre-established channels for ordering and allocating vaccine at the state level and then through their normal vaccine delivery channel. So, again, we're going to be providing technical assistance, um, to make sure that they understand the, the cold chain requirements um, and any other questions they may have in that process. And so, some of the providers are used to handling vaccines, but some of these providers are gonna be new and haven't done vaccines and, um, on their own in the past. And so, um, just working to make sure that they have access to the information and technical assistance that they need. And then the fourth strategy that we've identified is, um, to plan for the community-wide or mass vaccination um, and how that will really look for this vaccine. Um, because our goal ultimately, when, when the availability is there, um, we want to make this vaccine as accessible and available to all of our residents, um, that want the vaccine. And so, we plan to follow a similar strategy that we have with the testing, um, testing sites and making sure that we're going to the people with the vaccine so that, um, anybody who wants the vaccine has no barriers to receiving it. Um, and so, our next steps, Vettahie, um, are, one, is to continue to host the COVID nineteen vaccine planning coalition meetings. Um, those will continue as long as we need to. They are, um, currently held weekly and we'll continue to hold them as often as we need to make sure our partners feel, um, communicated with and engaged with. Um, the next step is, um, to work a little bit further on the enrolled provider outreach. We currently have, um, a little over forty, um, providers enrolled in the program. And so we're just gonna make sure we're engaged with them and that we have, um, good contact information for all of them so that we can push our information about trainings, um, any changes that are, are occur in, in this process and, um, helping them with that technical assistance, as I mentioned earlier. Um, the next step will be to identify gaps in the vaccine availability for phase one A personnel. Um, the hospitals did receive their, their shipment or have, well, expecting to receive their shipment of vaccine this week. And so, we know that they will plan to probably provide vaccine to their personnel, but there are other, um, groups in that phase one A that maybe aren't receiving the vaccine themselves. So, trying to figure out how they will have access to the vaccine as well. And so we'll do that through a variety of ways, either through our vaccine planning coalition and, and with that enrolled provider outreach and making sure we're looking through those lists and identifying the agencies in, in our community that, um, may be interested in receiving that vaccine. And then ultimately, we're also doing, um, a, a series of communication campaigns. I know our community leaders are working on this, our, uh, health district PIO is working on this. We've started releasing some information on our social media. Um, but just to s- expect to see the messaging and, um, campaigns around this to grow and really be, um, visible to our community. So, that, um, concludes my presentation.
Stephanie, uh, thank you so much for that, and Vettahie as well. Um, I'm sure that there are questions, um, and comments from our council based on some very heavy, um, subjects, um, that, that were covered, um, as well as some very hopeful and optimistic, uh, subjects that, uh, we just covered as well. So, any questions for Vettahie and Stephanie?
Uh, this is Holmes, I'll start out with a couple of questions, one to Vettahie and one to, to Stephanie. On the hospitals, I mean, hospitalizations is what we talked about, we're flattening the curve, uh, because we wanna make sure we have the right capacity. Um, and in the data that you presented, are you finding any predictive? Uh, this may be late in the game because we've got the, the, uh, the vaccine on us. Are we, are we seeing any predictive, like causation correlation between new cases and hospitalizations? What we can do to, again, control the hospitalizations outside of just, you know, mask and social distancing and good practices, best practices? Um, and I'm, I guess I wanna get to the point where we know that if we're seeing a, a certain rise in cases that we can tell five days out or a week or whatever, that the hospitalizations are come, you know, there's gonna be need for more hospital space. Uh, can, can you talk to that? I guess I'm, I, I like the data on this and I like how you had that moving, kind of five-day moving chart of kind of predictive, uh, measurement. But can you just speak to that, to, to, uh, how we're able to maybe give the heads up or get the data to our hospitals saying, hey, you know, in five days, we're gonna see this thing max out, so get ready?
Absolutely, um, Dr. Werner, please try and identify, miss something. But yes, when, in the past, what we have seen is if we see a rise in cases, then in three to four weeks, we are seeing an increase in our hospitalizations. And that's followed by increase in fatalities. So when we started seeing a spike, the latest spike that we had sho- had shown on the graph, we have calls with the hospitals, um, Stephanie is in contact with the hospitals on weekly basis. And we have the mayor's leaders call, um, three times a week where we discussed it. And the hospitals were kind of given a heads up that, um, since we have this increase in cases, you will be seeing an increase in hospitalizations.
That, that, uh, time, uh, shift from the new cases per day to an increase in hospitalizations has to do with the fact that, uh, people tend to get really sick during their second week of illness. Um, and, and second and into the third week of illness. So, uh, if your onset of symptoms is, is day one, then it's really that second week and into the third week where we see the patients who are going to progress and get severe disease. Uh, that's when their, uh, severe symptoms come on. And then it's, uh, usually after two or three weeks in hospital and in the intensive care unit on a ventilator, most of, more, most of the deaths occur as a result of a prolonged hospitalization. So this time shift in the curve from, uh, just new cases per day going up, uh, your hospitalization rate is gonna follow a good two weeks later, maybe three. And your mortality is gonna be, uh, two weeks after that. So, our current really high hospitalization rate, uh, is a result of that peak, uh, that really high, uh, new case rate that began, uh, uh, a month ago. Um, and it, it, it just means that, uh, what we don't know about the true effect of Thanksgiving, uh, can compound that, uh, curve uh, coming up soon. And unfortunately, and don't forget that, uh, there's no reason to expect that we won't have a flu season. Uh, we have escaped it thus far. But the onset of, of flu season, uh, varies greatly from year to year. Uh, we've had flu seasons start in our, in, in November and we've had flu seasons not even begin until after the first of the year. Uh, we're just, uh, just fortunate that so far, that it hasn't, uh, it hasn't really started. And it would be nice if, as a result of, uh, all our efforts to, uh, uh, reduce spread of respir- this respiratory virus, uh, the coronavirus, that as a result, we see, uh, a real decrease in the number of flu cases. Uh, it's, the, uh, coronavirus is likely more infectious, more contagious uh, than influenza. And, uh, a wider acceptance of masks is hopefully gonna lead to a, a significant decrease in the total number of cases that we have in flu season. It's just not gonna prevent it.
Okay, one of the follow-up questions I have is the average time in the hospital. I, I, I may be looking in the wrong place, but I've not seen a lot of data on that. What is, is it one day or two days or ten? Because that also could affect the time or, or hospitalization, uh, amounts.
Most of the hospitalizations are people with relatively mild disease. The things that, that triggers their hospitalization most of the time is their oxygen level is low and they have to come into the hospital to get the supplemental oxygen. And, and, uh, those patients may, uh, they'll usually receive treatment with steroid medications, possibly remdesivir, possibly, uh, uh, plasma therapy. Uh, we have new, uh, antibody treatments that are coming out. Um, but those hospitalizations for mild cases are typically three days, four days, five days, less than a week. Uh, their oxygen requirement goes up and then comes down. They improve and, and get out of the hospital relatively quickly. It's the ones that progress to a severe disease, require, uh, high-flow oxygenation. And the ones that go into the intensive care unit, it's the other end of the spectrum and their hospitalizations are prolonged, uh, typically two weeks, uh, and longer.
And I know we are seeing, you know, a, a cer- a certain rise, certainly in the hospitalizations, but also in the vent, uh, cases. But not a, not a giant jump in the vents. And it seems like we're still kind of containing that, so I'm keeping an eye on all that. Couple, one quick question for Stephanie. Um, on the vaccine planning, and specifically to the logistics, um, and then help me understand better, uh, two questions. Help me understand the providers, who are the providers? And then, uh, the logistics on the distribution, um, as we see it. I guess we're ready to do it here this week or, or, or in the next few days. Um, and then, uh, speak to the second dose concept, how we're, how we're, uh, tracking all that, if you could, if you would.
Yeah, so, um, from the, from the provider's standpoint, uh, it's your typical healthcare providers, clinics, um, and the hospitals and places that traditionally provide vaccines to the community are all enrolled as providers. In addition to those ti- more typical partners, there's also, this time around, long-term care, uh, facilities have en- enrolled. Um, they have a couple of different options for enrollment. They can enroll as a, a, a provider with the CDC, just like the doctor's offices and everybody else. But they can also enroll through CMS with a federal pharmacy program um, that matches them up with a, a commercial federal, uh, partner pharmacy, either Walgreens or CVS. We don't have a ton of details on, on how that particular agreement is working just yet. Um, that's definitely gonna be some information that we try to find out going forward. But that's nice because, um, they typically do partner with places like those pharmacies to do flu vaccines every year. And so it'll follow a very similar type of, um, process. And so, um, other places that are not as traditional, like I mentioned at the jail, um, you know, are, um, our, the health district is gonna be a provider, um, our immunizations program. So those are some of the types of providers that, that we're seeing. Um, in terms of distribution, uh, like I said, you know, the, um, these, a lot of these providers already currently receive vaccine. And so there's a state, um, allocation and ordering system that they will receive notification if the state has allocated a vaccine, a shipment of vaccine to them or if, um, they, we get to the point where they're able to actually order vaccine when the supply is there. Um, they can place orders through that. And the Pfizer vaccine is being shipped directly from the manufacturer just because of the cold chain requirements um, that are, you know, a little bit outside of the normal scope of vaccine handling. And so those are coming through their channels, through their own shipments. And I, I believe they're coming through, like, um, traditional mail carriers like UPS, um, and places like that. So they, Pfizer has worked out the agreements with those carriers to get the vaccine to, um, the providers directly. Um, when we talk about the Moderna vaccine and probably some of the others that'll be coming down the pipe, um, they use a federal contract that the, the CDC uses. they use a federal contract that the, the CDC uses for normal vaccine distribution through a company called McKesson, and they're very familiar with shipping medical supplies. And so they will be shipping those through McKesson, through this distributor directly to the provider. So we won't get a large shipment at the health department or at the city or county and then be responsible for divvying that up to the providers. It'll go directly to them and the state will make those allocations. And then there was one more question, what was it? Can you remind me again?
No, it was just the logistics on the two double dose thing. Do you just make sure that you give, make sure they come back in 30 days or whatever it is?
Yeah, so the, the recommendations have been that any initial allocations, you just provide those vaccines out to as many doses as you have. So you don't pull back half of the vaccine for the second dose. So the 975 that have been allocated to each R R C L is the expectation is they will vaccinate 975 people. A separate allocation will come with the second dose within, obviously within three weeks. And so there's a couple of different options. We were pretty used to having to remind people to come back for a second dose. A lot of our routine immunizations require boosters or a second dose to be fully effective. And so there's a series of ways you can do it. You can do it with just a card that you hand to the person and it gives them your, the date they need to come back. There is going to be a, or there is a, an application in place called Be Safe that providers are, are supposed to be educating people on when they receive the vaccine. And that's a, serves two purposes. They can enroll in that and provide any updates on adverse reactions or side effects that they experience as well as a reminder for their second dose. And we can, you know, all of the providers that are enrolled will have their own options for how they reach out to their clients and their patients to receive that second dose as well.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Can I ask very briefly, in terms of the phase one B essential workers, is that going to track the way the stay at home orders carved out essential workers? And are those decisions pretty much made locally? Like the, you know, in terms of who is getting it and in what order?
So the phase one B, I don't know for sure. If I were to guess, I would say they would probably go use some of those same guidelines. But that will be something that is determined at the CDC through ASAP as well as the, the recommendations are a little more broad at the federal level. And then when they come down, down to the, the state level, there's an expert vaccine advisory panel. It's been assembled at the Department of State Health Services and they further define who falls into those categories. And so that's what we saw with the, the phase one A. Healthcare workers was the broad, healthcare workers and long-term care facilities was the broad category from ASAP. And then it was further defined by Department of State Services, who actually is considered a healthcare worker. And it even further broke it down into tier one and tier two of healthcare workers. And so we expect that the same kind of guidance will come out for phase one B.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie, thank you and Bede here and Dr. Werner for everything that you all have done throughout this entire process, number one. We are grateful for your tireless efforts. And we couldn't get the information that we need to make decisions without that coming from you. So just let me say, I appreciate you. My question is kind of in line with Councilmember Water, regarding the vaccinations, the priorities. I, I can imagine that it would get down into the weeds having to determine, you know, because healthcare worker, I could be the lady who runs the gift shop in the, in the hospital and I'm still considered a healthcare worker. So I can imagine that it'll take a lot to separate that out. But regarding city staff, you know, so for instance, our firefighters and our police, the police department, you know, it, do you know where that falls?
So firefighters will likely fall under EMS, which is, is part of phase one A. They're, when they list them out, they're right under hospital personnel. And so firefighters would fall there. And then law enforcement, I believe, will fall in phase one B in the critical infrastructure set, personnel.
Okay, I, I, I thought, but I wasn't sure. Thank you for that clarity. And then my second question is, you were talking about having to educate groups that, that normally do certain vaccines, but not necessarily like the hospitals or like, and about, i- is it perhaps just because this requires, the, the COVID vaccine requires such particular cold storage? Or is that why that, that's the, that it, that they don't? Because they do give vaccines and they're accustomed to giving vaccines. But is that why that, that extra level of, of education is required?
That, that's part of it, but part of it is also because this isn't being issued like a normal vaccine with the, all the same approval processes and documentation that comes. That is, it is part of an emergency use authorization. And so helping providers to understand what that really means and the kinds of consents and different education they have to give to the patient at the time. That, those are some components of the, of the education that may not be as familiar to providers currently.
Thank you.
Just want to echo what Councilmember Bearfield said. And thank you, thank you, thank you, Deidra and Stephanie and Dr. Werner and Bede. I feel like I've spent most of my time the last month being on calls with the four of you. And you were just incredibly thoughtful in the work that you do. Stephanie, you are the queen of all things presentations. They're always so organized, such great data. Bede, I know that you play a huge role in that. So thank you for the work that you're doing. We are in incredibly good hands with y'all at the helm. So keep up the great work.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions, comments? I just want to say how much I appreciate this as well. It's been said, but throughout the last many months, having good leadership has been critical for our community in this hour. And so we're thankful for you. I do want to comment also how earlier on in the conversation, hospitalizations came up. And, and actually Councilmember Holmes touched on that. I'm so appreciative of our hospitals who, their leadership, who jumps on multiple calls with us every week. Waco's culture of collaboration is shining in this moment. Although we hope for better outcomes, we wish for better outcomes in our community with regards to the number of cases and hospitalizations. I know it would be far worse, were we not? We're, we're collaboration, not part of the Waco DNA. And so I'm really thankful for the hospitals as well as the, the presenters today. Dr. Werner and our other healthcare providers who have been so helpful in this time. So with that, Bradley, are we going to switch up a little bit? Maybe the next work, work session, or maybe not the next work session, but we want to talk through that from a timing perspective?
Sure, we are, we're at 4:40. So we've got two more work sessions on the agenda. We have the work group presentations up next, which I think will take 20 to 30 minutes total. And then we had planned to finish out with a trail master plan discussion work session, which is about a 10 minute presentation. Why don't we go ahead with the trail presentation quickly and close out with the work groups? Assuming we have time. Jonathan, will you, Jonathan, will you jump on screen? And while he's jumping on, I'll just do a brief introduction. We will be joined by Jonathan Cook, our Director of Parks and Recreation, as well as Tom Buck, our Program Manager for Park Planning. And they'll be walking us through the trail master plan, agenda item that's included as a resolution on this evening's business session. And take it away, Jonathan.
Hold on just one second as I'm getting squared away. All right, I'm going to go ahead and start. Can y'all hear me okay? Good deal. Well, today I want to join you and appreciate it and talk about creating connections. And this is not only the physical connections that you see on the Riverwalk right here, but connections that we create within our community with, with a solid trail system. So on the agenda today, we have resolution 202895. And it deals with our Trails Master Plan, a strategic plan, and some design services that we're going to be contracting if approved with Hafen Associates, really to address some conceptual design services in high priority venue and corridors within the citywide Trails Master Plan. It's a plan that we currently do not have. We do have a Parks and Recreation, Parks and Overspace Master Plan, but no citywide Trails Master Plan. And additionally, we're going to be looking at a strategic plan within this contract to really provide a recreation focus specifically in these trail areas. Now, we're going to look at the benefits of some proper planning and really the investment benefits of planning, our overview of our current trail system. Also looking at our planning and design strategy and how we're going to create and then activate this plan. You know, during COVID and in this conversation, there's one thing that from our perspective in Parks and Recreation, I think we can agree on is, is we've really seen the community impact the desire to spend more time outdoors. And you can really look to, obviously there's a safety factor, but there is a physical health component and a mental health component that really shows that trails boost health. According to the National Recreation Parks and Association's annual report, every $1 spent on trails, you can see up to a $3 savings in healthcare costs in a community. Plain and simple, healthy hearts equal healthy communities. Along that, there's the mental health benefit. And I think we all experienced this is you're able to take a break at, at work, take a quick walks, 20 minutes outside can reduce that stress. And it's what doctors can refer to as a natural prescription. Trails also make economic sense. Trails are the foundation of the outdoor recreation industry, which is big business here in Texas and a crucial economic driver. In Texas alone, our outdoor recreation generates $52 billion annually. 400,000 jobs in our state are tied to outdoor recreation. And along with wages and salaries, billions of dollars in tax revenue comes along. They drive spending, development, tourism. We see that here in Waco with the impact of events like Ironman and our river, Cameron Park, how people come from all over just to experience those natural amenities that we have. Trails also create jobs, increase property values for neighborhoods. And then they also boost taxes. Trails make our communities a desirable place to live and are really a benefit for any neighborhood in any downtown. Then trails are for everyone. A unique thing to look at is how trails enhance our neighborhoods and create connections, which I mentioned are attractions, our schools. We work with our streets program to really looking at how we create these sidewalk and trail connections to school. And they also provide transportation alternatives. No matter the mode of transportation, it allows people to be able to roam more freely about the city, get to their jobs or church. And then they promote social, racial, gender and economic equity. They're accessible to everyone, free to use. And really they're open 365, seven days a week. So it, it's really trails are a recreation component and a feature to the park system that's available to everyone. Now, our current trail system, we do have 13 miles of urban trail. And, and urban trail are going to be your concrete lighted trails that really carry you to another location. Some examples of that would be our downtown Riverwalk, which we now have a complete loop, except for during times of construction, as we're seeing, that loops around our Riverwalk or Cotton Belt Trail off of Highway 84. And then the Lake Waco Dam Trail, I use that as an example, very popular trail. And while that is not city property or city trail, we use, you know, our friends at the Corps of Engineers, they operate that area. And you know, such trails and partnerships can play a large role as we continue looking at a master trail system. We also have 24 miles of neighborhood trails and community park loops. And one cool thing we've recently done is, is as far as our parks matrix and requirements that we have, we look at installing fitness equipment along these loops as well. And then finally, I think most people are familiar with our trails in Cameron Park. These are soft surface trails. But you know, they also provide an important connection is you can go along the River Trail from Cameron Park to MCC. And so there's a connection and also a connection to our downtown Riverwalk. And you know, about 10 years ago, we received a national recreation trail. So trails are nothing new here in Waco and we're going to continue building those up with this planning process. Now I'll give you a quick look, it's sort of the, what we're looking at in the master plan. And, and this is a map we've been working on with our National Fitness Campaign Organization. And I just wanted to give you an example. This is what you call a heat map. And if you see the bright lights, you can see already the amount of usage that we're seeing in activity from pedestrians. And thanks to technology, this is taken from things such as like, you know, Fitbits, iPhones, people tracking different methods. But you can start to see to where we have, lack of better term, some dark zones. And that's where we'll be looking at connections. Additionally, a little clear, I'll, I'll show you the three urban trails that we have with Cotton Belt Trail in red and the Lake Waco Dam Trail and also the Riverwalk. And the yellow line, and this is a very basic map here. But you know, this just gives you an idea of some potential connections we can look at. You know, how you can create, connect some areas along Waco Creek to downtown? Or how do you connect the Riverwalk up to Waco Mammoth Side? Or Cotton Belt Trail coming all the way back down to Franklin? There are some exciting opportunities. And I did want to note on this map that you also have the skinny red lines squiggly everywhere. You know, those are natural sort of creek canals, drainage ways. In cities such as Houston and Fort Worth, you've seen a great usage and utilization of water corridors to really create connections. They're sort of a natural area for a trail system. So it shows you when you start looking at different waterways and what we have existing, that we're really looking to connect the dots with this master plan. I mentioned Hafen Associates. I, I wanted to say Hafen Associates is one of the premier planning and design companies here in Texas with a wide range of park design and strategic planning. And, and two quick examples, or three examples they've had, the Rio Grande Lower Valley, they did a project for them back in 2016, which is really a national award winning sort of master plan, where they went to Cameron County and connected 10 different communities in regards to transportation along trails. But then they also use what we call active tourism, active recreation with things such as bird watching and mountain biking through these areas to connect this community down in the valley. Great project. You know, they're also currently working on the Trinity River Project to where they're connecting urban areas of Dallas and communities like around White Rock Lake and connecting those to the more natural areas along the Trinity River. And they just completed and the council in the city of Prosper adopted a Trails Master Plan, very similar to what we're looking at. That's a growing suburb of Dallas, used to be a very rural area. But now obviously it's grown and they're looking at similar connections as well. So what we're going to get is a framework of a multi-use connectivity and activation of public space and really looking at how some projects can enhance transportation, recreation and quality of life. It's going to be a 10 to 12 month project and a lot of work between now and then is we're going to document our inventories, do our demographic account studies. Half's going to be helping us with some comprehensive mapping and also helping lead us in the stakeholder engagement. Obviously with any product, project that we have, very important to engage the stakeholders. We have a lot of walkers, runners and bikers here in Waco. So we're going to be talking to them and they're going to be helping us with our strategies and recommendation. Also an action plan. This includes areas of activation. And I mentioned that there's some anchor points along some trail corridors that we'd look to activate publicly and just from the Parkland perspective and other ways. And it's also, we're going to have to look at our budgeting and future partnerships as we leverage a long-term plan to continue development. We want to be able to sustain what we've started here in Waco. And you know, and realize how we're going to be able to maintain a growing trail system. But most important, we're going to meet the community needs. And as I mentioned, trails are for everyone. And there is a growing demand, there are great benefit for our community. So we're looking forward to working with Hafen on this project. And it's something that we appreciate the ability to move forward on some exciting times ahead. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen if that's all right.
Any questions for Mr. Cook?
And I'm going to hop on real quick.
And this is Holmes, I'll just jump in. Jonathan, I always appreciate your enthusiasm. And I like the, I like the, the theme of creating connections. I think it's a good way of looking at this because there's so many naturally beautiful parts of the city. And they're in separate, they're in different places. So I like the idea of connecting not only the, the beauty of the city, but also the people of the city, so they can be, they can share and all of us can share and what we've got here, which is pretty special stuff. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, what you. So I'm looking forward to seeing what, uh, what you and Tom and, uh, the HAF group come up with on this.
Thank you.
I echo what, uh, Jim said, I, I love your enthusiasm and passion for this and share this. I just bought some roller blades and I'm excited to hit the trails on my blades. Uh, question along this idea of trails for everyone lines. I would love if this isn't already a part of the conversation to really see how we can reach out to our neighbors that have disabilities, whether that is along audio visual or mobility lines to really make sure that these can be for everyone. I saw a really cool map of a city in New York or a park system in New York, and it was a Braille map. Um, so it feels like there's some cool opportunities that we can dig into here. Uh, but I love what you said about the intersection of so many different parts of our community using our trails. I think this is an asset that's often under, um, uh, under amplified or the stories aren't told of we're really seeing all of Wacoans using our trails across racial groups, across economic groups, and that is such a gift to our city. So I'm all for spending money in this direction, um, and something that benefits the entirety of our community.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Jonathan, we appreciate you so much, sir.
Thank y'all.
Um, we'll next, uh, move to our next presentation, I think. Um, I'm going to, I say I think, and Bradley, if you don't mind, I'll give an introduction here is because I know we've got, there's one thing, uh, we all have in common, it's chattiness. And, uh, we have a long exec today, so we're going to have to go quick, which means each group is going to have about three minutes. And I know that with all the work that each group has been doing, that's a big ask. Um, so hit the high notes, um, uh, I'll, I'll say really briefly, these work groups were formed by Mayor Dever early on, um, to foster collaboration through different stakeholders in our community to make sure that Waco was taking a strategic and proactive approach, um, to issues related to COVID. And as a result of that, um, we have, uh, council members and community members coalescing, uh, with other stakeholders around subjects to make sure that that is achieved. Uh, so with that, we're going to start off with Councilmember Jim Holmes and Sarah Roberts. Um, again, I know that we could talk about, each of us could go 30 minutes, but you're going to have three. And if not, I'm going to have Esmeralda ring the buzzer if she still has it and if she took it with her out of the, uh, city council chambers or, uh, office. Take it away, Holmes.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go, I'm going, I'm going to try to use the Jonathan Cook, you know, speed, speed, the speed dial here. Uh, yeah, our, the, the Business and Individual Recovery Working Team, Sarah Roberts and I are, are co-chair of that. Uh, we've a great team, we've kind of kept this team together of John Bible with the, uh, the, uh, Central Texas African American Chamber, Alfred Solana with Hispanic Chamber, Mike Metters and Chris Collins with Greater Waco Chamber, John Passant with Startup Waco, Megan Henderson with City Center, and Milet Harrison with the City of Waco. It's been a good team and we've, uh, a lot of collaboration, a lot of collegiality and cooperation. I've obviously having this group together and we, for a while we were meeting twice a week. Uh, and the creativity that comes out of it, working together with, with these guys and these minds has been, has been really rewarding in, in a lot of ways. And I hope that we can continue this group, uh, even past the, the pandemic. Uh, early on, we disseminated information on best practices, you know, masking and distancing to, to our member businesses. And it was great to have that conduit of John and Matt and Alfred all giving their membership, uh, guidance. Uh, we urge everybody to get into the Paycheck Protection Program, which was the federal program, Part Cares. Uh, we were seeing, uh, some, uh, some of those businesses kind of fall through the cracks. We were able to stand up, uh, this summer with everybody's help on council, really the $850,000, uh, uh, Small Business Emergency Relief Fund, which was, I think, a total success. Uh, giving, uh, helped over 200 small businesses, mostly, uh, minority and women owned businesses. So, but that was hitting the right target. And, and early this fall, just a couple of months ago, we did a virtual town hall meeting about the medical and, and really some of the legal stuff, which is, I thought that was very interesting and compelling. Uh, legal advice, dues and dones of COVID and best practices for businesses. Uh, we also, then last month, the City of Waco stood up, uh, helped stand up the CDFI, uh, Community Development Financial Institution with the leadership of Judge Vance and Tom Chase. So helping make small businesses bankable, which is, uh, kind of part of our initiative here. Uh, each of the chambers have done, uh, and Startup Waco with John Passant, they kind of also created their own programs that have been, uh, if you look at them all together, the, the sum of the parts is more, or the whole is more than the sum of the parts. And, uh, Startup Waco, uh, as you saw in the paper this week with Akiva, uh, uh, starting, uh, some crowdsourcing kind of a deal for micro businesses. Greater Waco has done the Biz Bucks Program, we hope to maybe see that again. Uh, C-TAC, creating equity fund for small businesses. Uh, Alfred over, uh, Central Texas Hispanic really led the way with our Financial Navigator Program. Um, and the City Center coordinated, uh, merchant programs with the visits through the pit. So, oh, everybody working together, I'm really happy with, with, uh, and the, the, the challenge continues. Uh, but I'm happy with what we've been able to communicate and been able to get out into the community with the city's help, county's help. Uh, and, uh, just, uh, continuing to see it going. You know, I wish it could be over because we need this whole pandemic to be over. But I think we're creating some programs here in the business community that will have a life after the pandemic, which that's what I'm maybe most pleased about as we, uh, talk about economic, uh, uh, benefits of, for the city in, in, in what we're doing here.
Councilmember Holmes, um, you were at 3:05, so barely over. Next, we'll take it to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Hector Sabido and Natalie Kalinsky with the Strategic Communication Team.
Thank you, Mayor Meek, and actually because I am long-winded, Natalie is going to make the presentation, uh, today. So Esmeralda, can we let her in, please, uh?
Smart man.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
And while she's being, while she's being let in, um, I will say that I know that there's a million things that each of us could talk about. So if we skip over anything, um, to anyone viewing at home, if we leave off anybody that's been a partner, give us some grace because it's, or blame me because I'm making us go fast. All right, Natalie, take it away.
Hi, I will be super quick, we were actually going to show a clip of the COVID-19 recovery video, but we will skip that. Um, for those of you who haven't seen it, we launched, um, that video a couple of weeks ago. It exists on the COVID Waco website, also on thewaco project.com and on countless social media websites from our partners. And it really, I think, does a great job of highlighting, um, the, all the work that has taken place. It gives us hope in a time where we can kind of see the finish line, but we're not there yet. So I would encourage folks to share it. Um, and of course, that was commissioned by Mayor Meek, um, way back in the summer. So, uh, finally came to fruition. We have launched a social media campaign with local influencers similar to Census 2020, um, that the city pushed several months ago. And, um, it's highlighting folks who, uh, some have had COVID or, um, some are, are taking precautions, but we're pushing that out digitally as a way to, um, again, encourage people to stay safe and also to thank our healthcare workers who, um, are really on the front lines and asking us to do everything that we can. And so we're hoping to encourage folks to comply. Um, we also have a digital campaign going on right now to encourage testing even when you feel well. Um, that's really focused on younger community members, 20 to 40 years old. Um, as we know, folks are traveling during the holidays and gathering. We want folks to get tested, uh, even more often than before. As the messaging, as the vaccine is coming out, our messaging is starting to shift. We've launched, uh, a couple of FAQ articles about the vaccine. Um, and are starting to lay the groundwork, of course, in conjunction with the Health District and the City of Waco to, um, get people prepared to take that. So that is kind of what we are working on right now.
Thank you Natalie and Hector so much, we appreciate y'alls good work, great job. Um, next, we'll turn it over to our Health Response and Coordination Team, which is Councilmember Kelly Palmer and Dr. Jackson Griggs.
Alrighty, I am giving Dr. Griggs a break from his eight million Zoom calls that he does in a day. Uh, Esmeralda, do we have the presentation that we could pull up?
Hope doesn't count to your time.
This is great, okay, so, uh, Health Response Teams, we can go to the next slide, please. So who's at the table, I'm just going to briefly read names. Dr. Griggs, who's the CEO of Family Health Center, our lovely Deidre Emerson, uh, Dr. Bill Kineff, who's the President of the McLennan County Medical Society, Dr. Rich Haskett, Vice President of Ascension Providence and Chief Medical Officer, uh, Dr. Brian Becker, Senior Vice President of Medical Affairs and Chief Medical Officer at Providence, Dr. Ahmad, interim Chief Medical Officer at Baylor Scott &amp; White, Dr. Michael Iason, Medical Director for Inpatient Health, Baylor Scott &amp; White, Dr. Ben Wilson, Associate Medical Officer, Family Health Center, Dr. uh, Werner, who, uh, we heard from earlier, Betahe, Betahe, who we heard from earlier, Stephanie, who we heard from earlier, and then Margaret Cowart, who is a nurse, nurse program manager, uh, Public Health District. So you see that we have a great group of men and women from all across the community, meeting weekly. Next slide. So some of the assets and benefits of us meeting together is this is a weekly held meeting where our public health professionals and medical providers are coming to the table. We are determining our shared priorities. Um, some of the benefits of this is we're getting to glean from the collective wisdom of our healthcare providers and then share that with city staff, um, and the mayor for the weekly press conferences. We're also able to provide some relational support to our healthcare leaders who are really carrying their teams on their back. Um, so there's this mutual support that's offered there. And then we are anchoring decisions in a local context. These are researchers to their core, they're reading best practices and articles that are coming out every day and then asking, how does this apply with our population, um, in Waco and in McLennan County? Next slide. Some of the topics that we're really diving into right now, uh, Stephanie and Betahe already covered. We're looking at testing, we have moved through a significant portion of our surge tests. So having conversations about what that looks like once we've run through all of those. Hospital capacity, like was mentioned earlier. One of the benefits too is we're having, and having this conversation, there's a high level of vulnerability and openness and trust between providers. And so they're sharing together how we can navigate, uh, throughout this process. Talking about mortuary capacity and cold storage, like Stephanie had mentioned. Public education is really key. Uh, Dr. Griggs and I and, uh, Councilman Sabido and Natalie, uh, our two teams met together last week to decide how we can really, um, effectively function together. The, the working group has talked through how to equip and serve our businesses really well. And then, uh, Dr. Werner and Betahe have come up with a community risk threshold, um, that has green, yellow, red, and orange that we can use to help hopefully shape and influence, uh, public behavior in the midst of this ongoing crisis. Next slide. And then future directions, we will continue to meet, obviously the vaccine, uh, will be a key topic of conversation throughout most of next year, like y'all saw on Stephanie's slides. We're really not going to see mass vaccination to the whole public probably until June or July of next year. And so having this group convening regularly will really help us to make sure that we're getting all the right people to the table, that we have all the information, um, and we can really push vaccine and public health from a equity and justice and accessibility standpoint. And that's it.
Awesome, thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate it. And last but not least, we have Social Services and Education with Councilmember Andrea Bearfield and Susie Painter-March. Take us home.
Thank you, Mayor Meek, um, the complicated part about Social Services and Education is at the beginning of the pandemic, it was like stopping hemorrhaging with, um, tape. Um, so we were meeting daily almost about getting services to people, goods to, uh, goods to people, resources to people, getting people, uh, emergency folks connected with folks who were in dire and desperate need. And while that has settled a bit in the time, over the time of the pandemic, we still have a great deal of work to do. And I'm especially grateful for Susie Painter-March for all the work that she does, um, outside of her work as, uh, the C- CEO of Prosper Waco. But, you know, just as my, my partner in crime in this, in this endeavor. Um, although, you know, the crux of the crisis, immediate crisis have passed, you know, we've still got, you know, tremendous sectors that are impacted by these waves and this disruption. Um, and at the year end, we know that we're facing fatigue. Um, our nonprofits, our charities, our churches, um, you know, they have persistent demands in, in, in the year. And none of that has waned any, however, the things that, that keep them going have, and the fundraising patterns are off completely. So we're having to, to find ways to assist them in those things. Um, our homeless service providers have been right on the spot, uh, extending services for their clients, finding ways. We had the presentation about cold climate, uh, resources today and had talked about that at the last council meeting because we know that that need will be there. Um, food distribution throughout Waco and McLennan County is growing. Um, we are ever grateful for Central Texas Food Bank, who, um, have been, you know, at the, at the front of the game, providing for those in need. Um, I know that one of the, the spots, the popular spots is Waco ISD Stadium, and there were at some, at one point over 900 cars, um, ready to do that. And one of the things that we thought perhaps would help is that, you know, if, if with our connectivity with WorkSource and with our, our commitment to WorkSource and workforce development training and upskilling of our citizens, that those who may be in need, who may be, you know, may be, may have an opportunity or may have a desire to get more, uh, education, more resources. So we have committed to adding information to those boxes for the, the people in line for the food bank. So we're just putting the information out there and we appreciate, um, everyone who has worked with that. Prosper Waco has done a tremendous job in getting that information for upskilling and rapid workforce training to the food pantry. Um, our schools are tying, tying the knots on both ends. And we know that, um, personnel is impacted just because of people who are positive with the virus, people who are quarantined, people who are just tired, people who are, um, have, having staff and teacher fatigue. And then the number of retirement, uh, for those people who are making decisions at this point is increasing. Um, and so we're, we're, the City of Waco with Prosper Waco is, is putting planning and funding in place to strengthen the McLennan County teacher pipeline, um, and training and recruiting and employing and retaining teachers by offering additional resources for them, and we're grateful for that. Um, student achievement is a challenge, um, we are, uh, that's my timer, we, we are, uh, working with, uh, hey, man, you said three minutes. Um, working with that because we have, have just seen and witnessed a tremendous loss from the melt of, of the students dealing with COVID. And we're trying to figure out what's the best way that maybe our community, our community can gather and rally around our students in the summer to kind of get, get, get them back to the places that they've lost with all of this brain fog and disarray, um, throughout the school year. And we're going to work with all of our partners, the same way we did at the very beginning of this, to wrap our arms around our children, um, quickly for our higher ed students. Fast for applications are down dramatically, um, because people just don't know if this is the time to make those moves in our county. And so there's more of a need for us to help, uh, high school juniors and seniors navigate their pathway to college or military or career, um, in order for them to move on. And then lastly, job training and workforce trainings are now essential for families and individuals. We're working with MCC, TSTC, Goodwill, uh, the city itself, Prosper Waco and other partners to, are working together to increase the number of trainings and add resources. We have seen other cities use their CARES Act money to, um, uh, reimburse tuition or create stipends to cover costs of trainings and upskilling. And so we're looking to see how Waco could potentially, you know, go in that direction and use that vein just because we know that it's necessary. Too many things, too little time, but I, again, I'm grateful for Susie Painter-March for everything that she's done and everything we'll continue to do in Social Services and Education.
Councilmember, thank you so much, Susie, thank you for joining us today. Um, we so appreciate your efforts, um, as well. Um, I, uh, just want to say how much I thank each of our council members. Uh, Councilmember Warder, who and I talked earlier today, um, about finding a, a valuable place for him on this team. Um, and I do want to say how much I appreciate each of the council members for giving their time to this. Uh, these are, I, I want to remind our public that these are volunteers, um, who are doing work, um, serving this community really, um, powerfully through fostering this collaboration. I also am so thankful because Waco is a problem solving city who works collaboratively and proactively to make sure that nothing falls through the cracks. And while we're imperfect and, um, are always striving to do better, I'm thankful, um, for these groups and the work they've done. So with that, on time, we are going to end at 5:10, Bradley, I told you how to get it done at 5:10. And, uh, um, so we'll, we'll, um, end the work sessions now, are there any future agenda items? Are there any future agenda items for anybody? If not, we will now recess the work session and reconvene to regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:11 PM. The clock turned on me, but.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071. Enroe Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. City Waco Independent School District and McLennan County owned properties in the area bounded by Boski Boulevard, Lake Air Drive, Cobb's Drive, and North New Road, an area around Cotton Palace Park. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. And three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at 5:11 PM.